Disclosure of pecuniary interest.
And the general nature thereof.
Section twelve, item twelve one.
Any more disclosure? Okay, item number three, approval or amendments of meeting agenda. Joe, okay, sorry. Be resolved that council approved the agenda, the regular meeting dated August thirty first, twenty twenty one as presented. A mover and a seconder, please. Bill and Matthew. So any discussion on minutes? All in favor? Carrie. Thank you. Approval of the minutes. Be resolved, a council approved the following minutes as presented. Regular meeting, council, August the tenth, twenty twenty one. A mover and a seconder? Joe and Doug? Discussion on the minutes? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Is there any business arising from the minutes? None? Any inquiry members of the general public? None? Delegation and presentations. Jim Diamond is going to give us an update on the official plan review that the town is in the process of undertaking. Go ahead, Mr. Diamond.
Thank you, your worship. The host is going to enable me to share my screen in just a second, and I'll have a brief presentation. I would really prefer to be sitting all with you in a room, and I look forward to the opportunity to do that as soon as Mr. Ford says that's okay. For now, we'll, we'll do this virtually, and I hope to be quite quick with you going through this. I don't want to, I don't want to go too fast, but at the same time, I'm more interested in what you have to say. So we were in ending the, what I call discovery phase of doing your official plan update. I spent quite a bit of time reviewing things that about the, the town, learning as much as I can, talking to people, talking to people from the province who always have ideas about what we should be doing. And my presentation tonight will be brief, just to talk to you a little bit about the background information. And then I, I need your direction as council to talk about where we go from here. One of the first things that struck me when I started working in Cobalt was you did not have current digital mapping that, that you really should have to be current. And so, working with your, your people from, I can't remember the name of the firm now, and my technician, we have created a, a base map that can be used for everybody in Cobalt. And that's, this is kind of what it looks like. And we build on that base map to learn more about the municipality itself. Your current official plan, this is a map that we've made based on the mapping that's available right now. I think that Dale will tell you that the mapping is folded up in the, in the municipal office, and it's twenty-four by thirty-six inches. And so this is what it really looks like when we put it in a digital format. And one of the things I need to do before too long is come back to Cobalt and just walk every street and see what this map is telling me. You can see lots of the, the hazard designations that are, are shown on the map, and those reflect historic mining hazards largely. Environmental protection areas, including your very cool sewage treatment system, and then the residential and commercial areas. What the official plan is to, supposed to do is to tell us where we want to go in the future. That's really what I need to talk to you about as we, as we have our quick discussion tonight. And if I can move my screen, I'll be even happier. There we go. So the servicing is always a key thing. You know, I, I've done lots and lots of work in Northern Ontario and lots of work in Southern Ontario. And one of the things I always find out about working Northern Ontario is unlike everywhere else in the province, you don't have a problem with sewage capacity or water capacity, which is a great thing. It means you could accommodate lots of development if, if that's what you want to do, and if development has an interest in coming to Cobalt. One of the difficulties that we deal with are the mine hazards that I talked about. And in many respects, they really kind of handcuff you in some ways in that the, the province's requirements for development within five hundred meters of these mining hazards is that you do a complete geotechnical study to make sure that whatever happens is not going to be a hazard to future property and life. And so while land values in Cobalt are attractive for people who are vacating Southern Ontario, which has happened very quickly, when we start looking at the cost to do these studies to determine whether or not the land is developable, you lose a bit of your petage on, on the value of land, and it also takes delay, and there's uncertainty. So it's one of the things we really have to deal with. The other thing that strikes me about Cobalt is the degree of attention to history. I'm impressed by it. I had known about it a little bit before I came to Cobalt. I know a lot more about it now. And you have twenty-five designated heritage sites in, in a small town of twelve hundred people. I've never seen that density of designated heritage sites. And I'll say off the cuff, between the mine hazards and the heritage sites, it's going to be hard to find places to redevelop or develop in Cobalt. And again, hence my need to reach out to you and the public and to, again, walk the streets and, and pay attention to all these dots that we've generated on the, on the new maps. So some of my, my key questions for you are what future development opportunities do you see in Cobalt? How do you see improving the quality of life? Do we look at economic development? Is it tourism or industry? Because I don't know that you can do both well, and, and a lot of smaller municipalities in Northern Ontario struggle with that. How do we develop through, do we do infill and intensification? Does it mean removing some older houses and building higher density? What do we do about the existing housing stock? Those are the, you know, the quick issues that I could see, and then ask again as council, if there are other planning related issues that you wish me to investigate. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll leave it to you to, to lead the council, that the people have, can answer or have comments about these questions that we have.
Okay, does anybody have any questions of Jim? Or comments? Comments also? Nobody has anything? No, I guess. Everybody's good, Jim. Sorry, Joe.
I personally would like to see more industry and tourism. There is a lot more revenue, I would say, with industry. But with all the heritage sites that we have, you're correct. Like, how do we clear this up? I'd like to have some more information on that.
Well, councillor, one of the options is we have policies in the official plan that require redevelopment of land to document the heritage site and archive it, but not necessarily preserve it in its current state. My, my two days in Cobalt in June, I saw a few sites that I thought were really good development sites, but they're also heritage sites. One is the garage. I can't remember the name of the garage. But, you know, it's identified as a heritage site. It would be a great location for a twelve-unit apartment building.
Thank you. Matthew?
Through your worship. It's a very interesting situation and not very common through the province. I would respectfully have to disagree with councillor Dubay. I believe that harnessing the, the national historic site designation and generating revenue through tourism will attract more smaller retail shops and, and long-term, long-term shops that'll stay here and build up for, yeah. With, with being landlocked as we are, and attracting industry is going to be rather difficult. And then that comes with a whole plethora of issues in itself, environmental, you know, what's that going to do to our wetlands? What's that going to do to our waterways? Our, our waterways have been damaged significantly by mining. What could that do in future? A lot more questions I see coming to the forefront if we were to try to really focus on attracting industry, where we have a unique opportunity here with our designation to continue to grow that and become a tourist, tourist destination, as we should be with that national designation.
Okay, very good. Matt, thank you. And you're thinking the cottage industry type of things?
That's correct. Bed and breakfasts, you know, smaller operations, retail.
Anybody else have any questions? If I could just add to councillor Johnson, you and I had a conversation about attracting the intellectual or the IT industry, small business, people cashing out of Ontario who've learned that they can work remotely. Is that the sort of thing you're also talking about?
I, I believe that would be a better fit for, for the tourism end of things and actually mesh quite well. If we could start developing some of the areas, i.e. the garage space, for instance, with some high-density residential, we could find that we could attract more professionals to the area who can, in fact, work remotely. On a personal note, I have a friend relocating from Southern Ontario to Cobalt within the next sixty days because he can work remotely. So he has a job in the GTA, and they've given him clearance through, you know, the pandemic and, and into the future to move wherever he'd like throughout Ontario, as long as the internet connection is decent, and he can work from, from wherever, remotely.
Thank you, your worship. Can everybody hear me? I haven't touched this piece before. Okay. You know, thirty years ago, I got heavily into trying to promote the tourism aspect of Cobalt and did a whole lot of fundraising and did a lot of great things for the town. And thirty years later, there's been very little actual progress within tourism from point of view of generating growth and income for our residents, for our town. It's a very slow process trying to do that. And I know ten, twelve years ago, the ministry sent up some representatives. They came up with money to buy things, and they went home not having bought much at all, and said it's very difficult to promote tourism and spending more money on developing tourism if a tourist can't find a way to spend money in your town and support you. So there's a great deal of work to be done in developing tourism. I think, as Matthew has stated, it is a very natural development. It is something that's hugely important, and it should be a fair shoe-in. But I think Joe is also quite right. Industry is the kind of thing that can set the groundwork to develop the tourism, provide some of the expertise, look for some of the middle-class people that we're beginning to not have anymore up here, and we need that sector to really propel us forward. So I think, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking we can't do one or the other. We have to do both, and we have to just set our limits and understand what's achievable and find a game plan that'll move us that way.
Thank you very much. Jim, I cut you off a while ago, I guess, eh?
Don't, don't worry about it. I want to listen to you. I'm tired of listening to myself.
You too?
Okay, someone else had their hand up. I, Bill?
Yeah, through you, your worship. I really agree with councillor Wilcox and Joel and Matthew. We have to work in hand and hand in both those, those areas. And we certainly need industry to, you know, bring people into town, and that might want to open up a shop or, or a cafe or whatever. Certainly that has to be looked at. The other thing too is we're landlocked, and I'd like to see, explore something that where we can perhaps, you know, look at a lot, put up some condos, or it might be a far-fetched idea, but certainly something to look at. I've had people already approached me looking for lots. I've talked to our CEO about that, but I'm not sure what is available in the town, but it would certainly be nice if we could do something. I understand that we have hazards and stuff like that, but it's something to me that we should look at because there are people looking for lots to build.
Okay, thanks, councillor Gabani. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, John?
Only after all the councillors have spoken, I just have a couple of points I wouldn't mind talking about.
Okay, thank you. Pat, you had your hand up?
Yeah, with the infill and building apartment buildings, we have to be able to, if we're going to do that, guarantee that they're at a reasonable rental or purchase rate. So we don't end up with more very, excuse me for saying it, but very low-class people coming into town because we already have a problem that way. So that's the only thing that concerns me. It's, it would be nice to expand that way, and I can think of a few spots to do it in too. But not if it's always going to be the low end. You know, we need some more high-end people in here, and we definitely need some younger people with families because, what did you say in the, you know, I was reading the, the stuff, we're fifty percent seniors? I can agree with that at least. No, that's my only worry in that part, is we've got to approach housing very carefully.
Okay, thank you, councillor Anderson. Anyone else? Okay, John?
Okay, just to add to the issue of infilling, it's really tough for councils to perceive with, with much of anything when the assessment base doesn't grow. So I think it's very important at the end of the day that somehow we develop a, a means to grow our assessment base. And to me, that means that either it's infilling or developing land, but I, I believe there, there are enough lots available that if we can identify through this planning process lots that are serviceable, meet the zoning requirements, and we can put those up for sale because pretty soon, in the realist, the way real estate is going, there's going to be an equilibrium. I think on, should we buy or should we build? And where I, I think that's going to be getting pretty close. So buying is fine. That's a good market for folks that are here. But also, if we can build, every time we build a, a new building, that pumps up our assessment base a little bit, and all of a sudden, we're in the right, going in the right direction. So this planning process, I think it's important to identify how and when or what the means are, effective means and reasonably cost means to put properties on the market. And I think if we saw, make sure that our zoning pilot laws is accurate and doesn't pose any problems, and, and we can put out the market a number of lots, as councillor Gabani was mentioning, he's right. We administratively, we've been approached to look at vacant properties, and we're a bit hamstrung to make sure that everything goes along with our, our zoning process that's a little bit outdated. So this, to me, the official plan and the zoning bylaw review is very timely and a, and a great opportunity for the council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. Anyone else have any comments and concerns? Okay, Jim, what's our?
Yeah, if I can move on to my next point, I promise, John, I try to just be fifteen minutes, so I try to keep my promises. So one of the things that we need to do is the Planning Act says when you're going to update your official plan, you have to have a special meeting of council wherein you invite members of the public to come and talk what the town needs in terms of an official plan update. And we should schedule that meeting sometime in the fall. I would like to have that meeting before I actually deliver a first draft of an official plan because I want to hear what people want to say. There's some special advertising requirements for that meeting that I'll go through with your staff. But would, September is probably too early now to meet it, but sometime in October, a special meeting of council to meet that requirement of the Planning Act would be in order. And so that's one thing. And then the other part of our, our program is that we said we would have an open house. And, and usually I like to do that after I've done a first draft of the official plan. And I'm, so that would be November or December. And I would like council's comments on how we get people to come out to these meetings. It's always a problem in a small town, and I can tell you lots of stories of my work in Far North, where I've, I flew to Mooseheadie five times for a meeting and never had a quorum, for example. So I'm interested in, you know, the, the being able to do this virtually is very advantageous, but I really do like the public, that, you know, the, the live public interaction. So two questions. Section twenty-one meeting, and we set a date in October to do that. Two, an open house, how do we attract people? And is, you know, late November, early December okay through that? And I guess the third one is, should we set up something with whoever runs your website for doing ongoing engagement through the website? I can do content, but I don't know how to load it up.
Okay, thanks a lot, Jim. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of people out there that do have questions, especially since we're doing this virtual now. I'm sure a lot of people are listening in and have got their ideas also. And we'll set that up as soon as we possibly can.
Okay. Would there be, does council think that there'd be an advantage in the event that before it says it's okay that we actually do a live open house and invite people to come and have a one-on-one chats? I mean, I'm, I'm hoping that by November we can do that, maybe not. Otherwise, we can organize it virtually.
Yeah, I guess a lot of that's going to depend on the province and then what their requirements are going to be at point nine. But it would definitely be nice to have a life. So, any comments? Matt?
Through your worship, I, I think it just speaks to, to how important having an updated official plan is. It's an exciting time. I mean, we're going to chew through this and come up with a plan in a direction for our municipality. So I'm, I'm looking forward to it. Looking forward to the work.
So through you, your worship, should I work with your staff to set tentative dates for these meetings and, and get them organized?
Yeah, most definitely. That's the best route to be taken, Jim. I see Pat had her hand up there too, so maybe she has another question.
Just a comment that by the time we get to the open house part, we will get, I think, better representation and everything if we can do it in person. There's only so many people in town that can Zoom and are comfortable doing it and everything. And most of those would sit there and be afraid to speak up when they're doing it through the computer, but people are more likely to speak up in person or walk around and talk to us, each of us personally, that kind of thing. I think we'll get better feedback in person if we can do it. So let's cross our fingers because it's up to the COVID.
Okay, thank you, Pat.
It is. I, I don't, I'm not concerned about delaying the process if a month or two, since we're, you know, we're going to be done next year, not this year. This is the table. So, you know, we had talked about, of course, it didn't all come out the way I wanted it to. But we talked about doing an open house in December or January. That's what is supposed to be showing up here. But kind of, you know, late twenty twenty-one, early twenty twenty-two in this area. We have lots of time in the later stages of the, of the, the time to still get this to you for approval in twenty twenty-two, if we need to wait for January or February to do an open house live. And so some direction from you on that would be helpful for me today.
Okay, very good. Just to get something clarified here, just in case there's people out there that don't know that, what an official plan is all about. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jim. An official plan is a requirement from the municipal, under the municipal act, proper?
Under the Planning Act, municipalities need to have an official plan. I, you know, what I like to say is the official plan tells us where we're going, not where we've been.
Okay, very good.
I like to advertise my official plan meetings as the future is in your hands, so participate.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any more comments, any more hands up. So thank you very much, Jim. Much appreciated. John, would you have something to add?
Thank you, your worship. Just that we'll be working with our moderator and our website developer to build this into the website and make sure it gets all the public exposure that we could possibly give it.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much. I look forward to meeting you live one day.
Okay, be resolved that council accept the delegation as presented. A mover and a seconder, please? Matt and Joe? Any more discussion? All in favor? Carrie? Hey, item eight, business arising from the delegation and presentation? None? Item nine, staff and committee reports. Nine point one, bylaw enforcement. Any comments on the bylaw enforcement report? Bill?
Now through you, your worship. I think Mr. Gilbo is doing his job as I can see quite clear here. So it's keeping up to keeping things in line, which I like.
Thank you, Bill. Any other comments? I also do concur with you. Mr. Gilbo is doing a fantastic job. Okay, nine point two, public works. Any questions or comments on the public works report? Go ahead, Pat.
I was just wondering if we had a date when everything would be finished on the, the water tower and did say something about three weeks or so that it had to, to sit there and cure?
John, can you answer that one?
Certainly, the, the relining of the tower is complete. The curing of the epoxy is complete. The water tower, I think, will be filled tomorrow, and tests will be sent off to make sure that everything is, is fine, and then probably we should be flowing water to the houses from the tower towards the end of the week.
Bill?
Yeah, through you, your worship. I've just, just I seen wetlands in the centaur on this report is, have we made any progress with the MOE on certificate of approval, or where's that? Is it still at the same old, same old?
Maria's story is continuously working with the ministry, and I believe she is gaining some ground, but we haven't heard of anything outstanding. Doug?
Also, I note that they are doing roadway painting ongoing. And further to our earlier discussion about tourism and development in Cobalt, it strikes me that that is the kind of thing that is usually best done early in the year, after the melt's gone and the dust, gravel is removed, because if we do want to present our town as a good place to come to, fresh paint and those kinds of things at the start of the tourism season would probably be a, a good idea. Maybe it's something in the future we can try to schedule a little bit closer.
Absolutely. We'll put that in, in the agenda for next year and make sure it gets done earlier. Anyone else, Joe? Okay, that was, I'm coming up, that one next.
You're muted, Joe.
You were muted, Joe. Okay, nine point, I guess it's not nine point three. There is no, no, we have no animal report this month again. The contract is going to be due up this year, so we're going to definitely be looking into this a little closer. Uh, the contract is going to be due up this year, so we're going to definitely be looking into this a little closer. Matt, have you? Any comments or questions on animal control then? Bill?
Well, quite frankly, I'm disappointed with, with our control officer, uh, no report. This is what, two, three times now? Um, I'm just going to state it, state it publicly, I'm very disappointed.
Okay, uh, Doug?
Uh, I'm disappointed that we're not getting reports. I'm not particularly disappointed with her performance on the job. I note one of my neighbors recently had a, uh, a box given to her to, uh, catch a wild cat in, uh, and try to have it, uh, looked after by the, uh, animal control officer. So, you know, she's doing her job, she's in the town. And, uh, I haven't heard enough negative reports to suggest I, I would have a, a more negative opinion. I'm, I'm reasonably pleased.
Pat?
Uh, ju- just for a bit of a, uh, an update, I know uh, today's Tuesday. I think Thursday she's taking another batch of cats, and I know some of them are Cobalt cats, the wild ones that she's, she's captured. And they're all going down for neutering and their shots. So at least once a month, uh, she's capturing, you know, using the cages, capturing, taking them down and getting them looked after. So it's bringing us population control, it's getting them their shots. And at present, I have one sitting on our back porch to try and for our feral that we've been looking after for four years, to try and persuade him to get in there and go for a North Bay holiday for a couple of days. But so far, he's not going to cooperate. I think he's too old for that.
Okay, thank you, Pat. We will work on that report, definitely though. It's part of the job and part of the contract, and it would be nice to know it right from the horse's boat.
Oh, okay, yep.
Okay, no more questions on staff reports, no more comments? Okay, be it resolved that council accept the staff and committee reports as presented, a mover and a seconder, please? Doug and Joe? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, item ten, items for council direction. Ten point one, establishing a new signing authority responsibility. Whereas all financial transactions and banking instruments require two signatures by the corporation. Now therefore, be it resolved that council authorized Cassandra Baldwin to become an alternate signing authority for all banking instruments. Council confirms that John Hodgson, clerk treasurer, remains the primary signing authority. And Dale Taylor, deputy clerk treasurer, remain an alternate signing authority. And further that council confirms that George Othmer, mayor, remained a primary signing authority and Doug Wilcox, deputy mayor, remains the alternate on behalf of council. Mover and a seconder? Matt and Pat? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Carrie? Okay, ten point two, altering office hours and admin staff hours. Did everybody, okay, I'll, I'll read the motion first, now we can move, uh, be it resolved that council accept the report on altering municipal office hours and admin staff hours. The municipal office hours will be from eight to twelve PM and twelve thirty to four PM. Lunch hour will now be reduced by one half hour and will go from twelve to twelve thirty while remaining closed. Office staff working hours will go from thirty-five hours per week to thirty-seven point five. This will be effective as of September the first twenty twenty. A mover and a seconder, please? Joe and Matt? Discussion? Go ahead, Doug.
Uh, I guess due to, it requires me to ask if, uh, if, if we had looked at having, uh, at least one person open in an office at all times, uh, sort of a graduated, take a lunch break in different orders of time, uh, rather than having everyone go home at the same time? Would that be feasible or that has been considered? Uh, perhaps John could comment?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Thank you, um, your worship. Definitely was discussed, but, uh, that would mean altering hours, uh, for leaving or altering hours for starting. Um, I, I believe it's more effective if the, the actual, uh, office itself, especially with a small office, three, three people in there for the most part. Um, you know, alternating people is, is often not that easy. Uh, so I think the, for effectiveness, uh, the one and a half hour closure, um, allows another half hour for the public to access office staff. Um, and allows the office staff as a group to be able to, um, get in and, you know, add extra little bit of time, uh, at the end of the day when things often run in from one day to the other. So yes, it was looked at, but, uh, this was the consensus of the staff that, uh, going with the closure for a half an hour, uh, is the most effective. And it'll ta- take a while for people to get used to. I mean, although the office has been closed for an hour, uh, with nobody manning the phone, so to speak. Uh, and we believe that, uh, this bringing it more in line, because an hour just was too long. Um, people felt was too long for the break that was required.
Thank you, John.
Any other comments? All in favor? Harry? Okay, ten point three, report prepared by staff on ongoing changes to vaccine protocol. Be it resolved that council accept the staff report as prevented, presented and further direct staff to adapt and implement missing health unit directives and the province of Ontario's soon to be released template for municipal vaccine protocol implementation. In the interim, council meetings will be open to the public with appropriate and current COVID protocols. Mover and a seconder? Pat? Do we have a seconder? No seconder in the motion of Matt? A discussion on the issue? All in favor? Uh, how many four here? I'm not sure. One, two, three? Three, four? Against? Oh, if you're not going to vote, you, if you don't vote, it's, it's a no vote. Go ahead, Matt.
Your worship, this is a rather hot button item, but this is something that we need to discuss at this table. Yeah, this is, uh, this has to do with the health and safety of our staff, um, residents in our community and volunteers. Whether you're, you're for vaccinations or not, this is definitely something that should be discussed before we go to, to, uh, any type of vote. I know it's difficult, and I know everybody has differing opinions on this, but there should be a discussion without, without judgment. There should be a discussion where we can come to an actual solution and, and vote appropriately.
Okay, well, the floor is open for discussion. Doug?
Oh, thank you, George. Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm bothered by a lot of this, uh. I understand that people might want to, uh, take a step back and wait for direction from the government. Uh, I'm not particularly pleased with the government's uh, current stances and politicization of this public health uh, problem that we're all facing. Uh, I notice, you know, in the interim, the council meetings will be open to public with appropriate and current COVID nineteen protocols. Uh, that hasn't been the case all of the time. Uh, so I'm not sure just what we are following. Uh, it raises a lot of questions in my mind. Uh, I do see universities, colleges, Canada's five major banks, all moving to, uh, requiring vaccinations from employees. And those who decline to be vaccinated apparently are being offered, uh, leave of absences. Uh, so it's a major question, and the only thing I can think of is probably we do want to see how it's going to evolve, uh, before we take a stand. Uh, so I'm not sure that I can particularly support this. Uh, so well, I'll leave it up to the majority opinion.
Phil?
Yeah, through you, your worship, um, there seem, it seems like things are changing every day. Uh, I think I heard something today by Dr. Cornel saying that, uh, there's a passport coming out. He said, it's just a matter of time. So what does that mean? Like, you know, like they're going to put more restrictions and more restrictions. So perhaps maybe this is a little bit a little too early to have this discussion, or maybe we should wait for a little while, uh, to see what's coming down the pipe. Because, uh, like I say, things are changing every day. It seems to be evolving more and more restrictions. Um, and I know, I, I, uh, the thing about designated high-risk sectors by the government, I was thought that all employees were to be vaccinated regardless. So perhaps maybe my, my information isn't correct, but I just didn't think high-risk sectors, what, what is a high-risk sector? Like, I'd like to know, like, what's their definition? You know, is it because you're dealing with the public or what? You know, what is a high-risk sector?
Absolutely, we don't know. Uh, Doug?
Uh, just to follow up on Counselor Gavani's comment about more and more restrictions. I think the other side of that coin is by issuing passports, you are in fact giving greater freedom to people to be able to attend with a modicum of safety, uh, a number of outstanding functions. If people don't want to get vaccinated, that's still their personal choice. But it allows those people who did get vaccinated to try and, uh, ensure that the public receives the best possible protection from a pandemic. Uh, you know, it's, it's a means to give people who've taken that step an opportunity to do more. And perhaps an encouragement to those who haven't quite managed to come around to being vaccinated to consider it more further.
Phil?
Yeah, um, that's what I kind of meant, that it gives you a little bit more freedom to move, uh, for sure. I didn't mean more restrictions, but it gives a person who's vaccinated the opportunity to move. But those who are not vaccinated are certainly going to be under those restrictions. So but it seems to be changing every day, so.
Thank you.
Through your worship, I am in agreement with Counselor Wilcox. I cannot support this report. There are a number of contradictory points throughout the report stating, uh, options in summary, under options in summary, for instance. Uh, number three, the municipality has a responsibility to make the workplace safe by implementing standards set by the province, and we are doing that. Requirements may change once the vaccine mandate provisions are announced in the province, by the province about municipalities. Number four, health unit confirmed we are not a high-risk area. Most municipal mandates refer to high-risk areas. We've had our office closed since the start of the pandemic. Has that been outlined by the Timiscan Health Unit? Has that been outlined by the province? I can safely say it has not. We did that as a municipality to protect our workers. And it's incumbent upon us as a council to have that same wherewithal to do what's right by our rate pair. These decisions are difficult, but they need to be discussed and made. We made the decision to protect our staff. We've shut that office down. That, that office is locked tight. Even with the safeguards and, and barrier glass in place, we, we did that. Why we're pulling back on this now is of concern to me. And I, I just, I would like a report that would stick to, you know, not only the guidelines set out by the province and our health unit, but also takes into account the precedent set by the municipality itself in our current day-to-day operation.
Okay, John, you want to?
I'm not sure what the misunderstanding here is, your worship, the, the resolution is straightforward. It, it says that once there is a protocol established by the Timiscan Health Unit through the province of Ontario, that the municipality will abide by that. We are not governed by banks, we are not governed by universities. Uh, this mandate, we are governed by the province, and the, and the municipality can only do what the province allows. So what this resolution states is that once the province and the health unit establish the necessary protocols and mandates, the municipality has a mandate to follow that. The closure of the, the office was done by council, but it was also done because of the mandates the province set in for two meters, uh, separation, which we could not, um, accommodate. So to actually discuss alternatives that are outside the mandate of the province or the Timiscan Health Unit is a very dangerous and slippery slope that does, that we would not live up to our requirements to be consistent with the direction of the province. And so I think it is a responsible, uh, step to take that we will implement, um, the directions of the, of the province. And that's all this resolution says. And so we're, we're waiting that and we follow it every day. It does change every day. But to, to come up with, uh, rules or new rules, um, by watching television or doing research on our own, um, that's fine, uh, for personal decisions. But a council, a municipality is responsible, uh, under the municipal act for the direction of the province.
Okay, any more comments, questions? Go.
Thanks for clearing that up, John.
Okay, do you want me to reread the motion and we can vote on it? Be it resolved that council accept the staff report as presented and further direct staff to adapt and implement missing health unit directives and the province of Ontario's soon to be released template for municipal vaccine protocol implementation. In the interim, the council meeting will be open to the public with appropriate and current COVID protocols. A mover and a seconder? We did have a mover and a seconder originally, did we not? Okay, sorry about that. Okay, all in favor? Three, four, all against? Bill, did you vote for or against, Bill?
No, I'm going to support what John said on this one. Uh, as I said, yes.
Okay, could I have the four up again then, please? One, two, three, four, and against, three? One, two, two, okay. Okay. Ten point four, trailer park fee consolidate consolidation. Be it resolved that council direct staff to consolidate the current three buildings fee structures into one monthly bill for trailer park tenants? This fee structure would be implemented as of January the first twenty twenty-two. A ninety-day notice to tenants is required. A mover and a seconder, please? Matthew and Pat? Discussion on the item? Go ahead, Pat.
Okay, um, looking at the, the way the charges were, have been put out so far, I can understand that the tenants would have trouble trying to figure out what am I paying for now this week, next week? Uh, having just one full monthly billing will be good. And then we're going to have to watch for rent increases, this kind of thing. Um, that will be a next step, I guess, after that, but I think putting it all into one bill, billing is, uh, you know, one monthly billing is, is a good, is a good way to go start.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor? Pat?
Sorry.
Ten point five, request for community hall rentals to be considered in light of COVID protocol. Be it resolved that the town of Cobalt defer approving all community hall rental applications as the evolving and unpublished protocols around COVID nineteen mandates include vaccination requirements, uh, make it difficult for the town as the building owners to establish rules and protect itself from liability associated with this matter. This decision will be reviewed in early twenty twenty-two. The exception is that the community hall will continue to hold council meetings. A mover and a seconder, please? Joe? And Pat? Discussion?
Good idea. Good idea.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yes, true, I think it's a good idea to defer that, certainly puts a lot of liability, we get more more clarification, I suppose, it's coming down the pipe, like I say, things change every day, so it's best to defer it, I think it's a safe way to go.
Any other comments, concerns? Pat?
Fully agree with that. Let's play it safe. After last winter, you know, better better not to hold group things.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. Items for council information, item eleven. Bylaw number twenty twenty one dash twenty nine authorizing the debenture from Public Works Garage New Built. Be it resolved that the attached bylaw twenty twenty one dash twenty nine be in a bylaw to authorize the borrowing upon amortization debenture in the principal amount of eight hundred thousand dollars towards the cost of the community public works facility for the town of Cobalt be read a first, second, and third time and finally passed the thirty first day of August twenty twenty one. A mover and a seconder, please? Joe and Matt? Discussion? All in favor? Carrie? Hey, there's an amendment to the eleven point two amendment to bylaw twenty twenty one dash twelve clean yards that will allow a limit for the court's consideration while ruling on bylaw infractions, not addressed through the ticketing. Be it resolved that section five point four of the bylaw twenty twenty one dash twelve clean yards be amended to state pursuant to section four twenty nine, parentheses, one, the municipal act, a person convicted of an offense contrary to a provision of this bylaw in a proceeding commenced under the part three of the Provincial Offenses Act, R S O nineteen ninety P thirty three is liable to a maximum fine of twenty five thousand dollars. Mover and a seconder? Matt and Bill? Discussion? All in favor? Carrie? Thank you. General business, schedule of accounts. Be it resolved that council receive the following schedule as presented, schedule number twenty twenty one dash fifteen in the amount of one hundred and sixty seven thousand four hundred and sixty dollars and seventeen cents. A mover and a seconder? Pat and Bill? Discussion? Comments on the schedule? All in favor? Carrie? Okay, we'll wait till counselor you will get returned. Okay, item thirteen, motion for which prior notice has been given, we have none? Mayor's report, we have none? Notice of motion, none? Counselor updates, is there any counselor updates? None? Counsel questions and answers? Go ahead.
I have one. We got through you, your worship, since we brought up the the payment of allowing the eight hundred thousand for the towards the building of the garage, just a couple of questions on that, has there been a contractor selected? And have we had any plans? Has any plans been submitted to the town for review or anything?
Can you take that one, please?
Yes, your worship, the contractor was selected, it's Peterson Construction, the plans been submitted, and the building inspector has them.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Go ahead, Bill.
Anticipation of startup? For the contract, when is it going to start? On the building?
The startup is late delay because of supply chain issues. But everything seems to be in in line for construction fairly soon.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, closed session. Be it resolved that council convene in closed session as per section two thirty nine of municipal act two thousand and one as amended in order to address a matter pertaining to subsection to subsection two personal personal matter about an identified individual including municipal or school board employee, mover and a seconder? Matthew and Joe? Okay, thank you very much, staff to proceed. Sorry. Nineteen, business arising from closed session. I have a motion here, be it resolved that council authorize staff to proceed with a poll to the public on recreation activities within the town of Cobalt. Does that cover everything that we want to do? Go ahead.
Your worship, I think I would add up to an including introduction of new programming or new programming for, you know, seniors and or different age groups, or something along those lines, just so people get an idea of what it's all about. We don't necessarily want them to to comment on the current offerings, we want to see about their feelings with introduction of new program.
Perhaps adding the word expand.
I get still get question about the
perhaps adding the word expanded programming.
Okay, I'm going to reread the motion, then, be it resolved that council authorize staff to proceed with a poll of the public on recreation activities within the, on recreation activities, including new programming and expanding on programming within the town of Cobalt. Mover and a seconder? Matthew and Pat? Any more comments, questions? Doug?
Don't go anywhere, hey, there you are. Could we also have something on that, like, that would simply invite, say, would you be willing to volunteer to support such a program? Might as well see if we can get some volunteers at the same time.
That doesn't have to be on the motion, I don't think, we'll just we'll just make notes of that, is that good, Doug?
Oh, yeah, let's make the form work harder for us.
Okay, very good. Okay, all in favor?
Point, counselor.
Very good point, Doug. Somebody who's been muted. Him twenty, confirmation bylaw. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty twenty one dash thirty be in a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the corporation of the town of Cobalt be taken as read a first, second, and third time and finally passed the thirty first day of August twenty twenty one. And further, that said bylaw be signed by the mayor and the clerk and recorded in the bylaw book. A mover and a seconder, please? Bill? And Pat? All in favor? Carrie? Adjournment? Be it resolved that the regular meeting of council be adjourned at eight oh two, mover and a seconder? Matt and Joe, all in favor? Thank you very much, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for listening in.